Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. We are glad you're with us tonight. Thank you for coming. We have some special guests. And please come in and find a seat. We'll get going here with our meeting. We're on TV, so we have to keep a schedule. That's the reason why we have to get started. So thank you for being with us. As we normally do, we will start in just a minute with a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance, and then we'll have some other recognitions that we'll get to. So let's go ahead and do that, and then we'll get started with the meeting. So please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we get started this evening, first I would like to recognize our newest member of our city staff, but she's been with us a good while, but she is now in a different job, our planning director, Ms. Hannah Williams. Mrs. Hannah Williams is here. Hannah, stand up. Hannah has been with our planning department for a number of years, has been an assistant planner and a number of other things, and has been our interim planning director for several months now, and now has been moved to the new director of planning, and we are glad to have you, Hannah. Thank you for all you do and appreciate your hard work and look forward to working with you. And we also look forward to this new baby that's coming soon. So congratulations on that as well. A lot of good things happening in the Williams household right now. And also tonight, we have a couple of special guests with us that we're going to recognize, and I'm gonna bring Katie and Tommy up first to come up with us. Katie and Taylor Brummett and Jamie and Tommy Rubeaker of Liquid Roots Brewing Project of Lenora are our Main Street champions for 2022. They were recognized last week in Statesville at the North Carolina Main Street Conference as our champions, and we're honored that they are representing us so well. They did a wonderful job. The video was fantastic. Hopefully, all the council will get a chance to see the video that was shown at that on that. Kaylin and Matthew, thank y'all for your hard work on putting all that together. And we're also excited that we won a Main Street Award this year, which has been like our eighth or ninth over the last 10? Nine. Thank you. Nine in the last three or four years, and we're excited about that. But we were selected as for Best Economic Recovery Initiative. This was for pivots, participation, and patronage, PBPP, with digital platform initiatives. And Matthew, I know, was behind that, Kaylin, both, and thank y'all for that. It was a great award, and we were honored to be there. So if you will, I'm gonna ask you guys to come up, and we're gonna shoot some pictures with the awards, with our award winners, and Matthew and Kaylin and the council, if we can. And tonight, we also have another couple of special presentations. Just a minute, I'm gonna recognize Tracy Trimble to come up and join me at the podium in just a minute. Tracy is involved with the Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association, and this year is their 30th anniversary. So we are doing a proclamation in honor of 30 years of sister cityhood and the relationship that we've had. And tonight, on top of that, we have a great thing. We have a group of students that are coming to visit Highbryton High School from Germany, and we're honored to have you guys back with us again. I know that some students came over several years ago, and we'll let Mr. Samuel tell us about that and everything in just a few minutes. But first, I'm gonna do the proclamation with Tracy, and then we will recognize everyone else. Lot going on. Tracy, thank you for joining us and for what you do with the Sister Cities Organization. 30 years, that's quite an accomplishment. This resolution is honoring 30-year anniversary of the Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association, whereas Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association became an official nonprofit organization on March 24th, 1993, representing Alexander, Burke, Colwell, and Catawba Counties, as well as the municipalities within those counties. And whereas, the Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association chose to pursue a sister cities relationship with Altenberger Land Region in Germany due to the area's strong culture and business ties to that country. And whereas, in 1997, the WPSCA made international history, becoming the first ever region-to-region member of the Sister Cities International. And whereas, 2023 marks the 30-year anniversary between the Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association and the Altenberger Land Region in Germany. And whereas, during the past 30 years, there have been countless in-person exchanges, programs, and official delegation visits between the two regions, including high school and sports exchanges, government and business exchanges, arts and cultural exchanges, and the community service projects. And whereas, the WPSCA plans to celebrate their 30-year anniversary throughout 2023, and encourages mayors, commissioners, and leaders representing our four-county region to donate items to be placed in a time capsule commemorating the anniversary. And whereas, representatives from Altenberger Land will be visiting this region during Oktoberfest this year to honor and celebrate their partnership with the WPSCA. And whereas, WPSCA will bury the time capsule at the Western Piedmont Council of Government's property during the Altenberger Land delegation's official visit. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, as mayor, and on behalf of the City Council of Lenora, and all citizens, do hereby congratulate the Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association on their 30-year anniversary, and encourage our citizens to support and participate in all activities connected with this special year of celebration. Thank you. You're very welcome, very welcome. The items to present to you, we have a City of Lenora flag that we would like to present to you, a couple of our city coins. This has our city seal on it, and our new seal, the Lenora, on these two, and our All-America city seal is on that, these as well, to you. And then several of our lapel pins, our flag and our city seal lapel pins to go in the time capsule. So Tracy, I'll turn the mic over. If you'd like to speak a minute, let me take those.
Thank you so much for allowing us to speak today and for honoring the 30-year partnership. We are hoping to get the partnership restarted post-COVID with Highbryton Exchanges. So we're working with Sasha on that, and also Jim Probst with his group. So we are hoping to get that initiated this next school season. And we have, as the mayor mentioned, we have exchanges that range from education to cultural exchanges to, you know, we're trying to also get a beer exchange for the Oktoberfest, which seems to interest people, but arts and municipalities and government exchanges. So we just want everybody to participate and understand that it is the four counties. A lot of people think that it's just the Hickory area, and that's not the case. In fact, most of the exchanges from the high school side come from this area. So we look forward to revamping that relationship, and thank you very much. And I'm sure Sasha will tell a little bit more about the programs that they offer there, but we really appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
Tracy, you wanna do a picture with the population now, or you wanna do it with all the students?
I'd love to do it with Sasha and the students.
Okay. Well, then we'll introduce him if you mind, and we'll do that. So we'll go ahead, and I'll invite Mr. Samuel, if he'll come up and join me here. And then I'm gonna let you do some introductions and all that. We're glad to have you. It's been a while since we've been able to do this, so we're honored to have you back and have the students from Germany. You told me, I think, where they're from, so you're gonna have to remind me of all that, because we were gonna catch up, but y'all walked in, we were still ready to start the meeting, so I didn't have a chance to do that. But if you will, kind of tell us that, and then we'll let everybody introduce themselves to us, and the teachers and all that, and then we'll shoot some pictures, if that's okay. But we're glad to have you.
All right. So we have a gap program at Highbryton and at Stegen, Bebitzey-Stegen, and my partner is Gregor Fitterer. He can actually come and join me already. Because we do this together. And then he has his colleague here for this year, Svea Beiser, as well. You can also come and join us. All right. So what we've been able to do the last four years, we've been trying to get back together, and it's finally come to pass that we can join again because of COVID being an issue. But we're finally back. And what GAP is, it's called the German-American Partnership Program, and it's funded by Germany and the United States. And we've been blessed to have funding from both places this time. We both got some stoppins to help fund these programs. So like today, we got to see a big-time cultural heritage thing, the NASCAR Hall of Fame. And so we were trying to think about something that we could introduce the Germans to that would be particular to North Carolina, and that was a great fit. We just really had a good time with that. And then later this week, hopefully, we'll eat some good barbecue, but also some things from Germany that, of course, because it's supposed to be an exchange, okay? And the last thing that I would like to say is, I'm just really thankful for this community. There are so many people that have stepped up to be a host to these children, and, you know, it really enriches the whole community. Yeah? Mr. Stevens, you're one of them. I appreciate that. That I feel like it enriches the Highbryton community when these kids can come, and it's just, they learn so much from one another. But that wouldn't be possible without the families that live here. So I'm really thankful for that. And I'm also thankful for Mayor Gibbons always inviting us and always giving us a voice here to where we can, you know, spread the word about this program, because it's been 10 years now.
Yeah, it's an anniversary.
So we're also celebrating, not just 30 years with the Sister Cities, but also 10 years that we've been doing this, Highbryton and Stegen.
It's the last COVID.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Gibbons and everyone else. And also, I would like to thank the families especially, because there are a couple of families that have been hosting our kids for many years now. And like, we really cannot do it without the families. I really appreciate that you're all very open, and you show the hospitality, and of course, you make the students feel at home in your places. And I'm really very thankful for that, that you're doing that again and again. And yes, we'll always have a good time here, and I'd love to come back again. As I was saying, and Mr. Samuel was saying, this is our 10-year anniversary, so we're happy that we could make it. The COVID situation was very bad for all of us, and we weren't sure whether we could come this year or the year before, and we was trying to do it again and again. But finally, now, we could come, and it's a very great place, and I really like that we have that partnership going for 10 years now. And of course, I hope that we will keep doing it, keep continuing it in the future. And Mayor Gibbons, I also have a little present for you from the Black Forest. This is a typical Black Forest hat. It's not a hat, it's a magnet, of course, but it's a symbol. And this is Jovi from Switzerland, which is nearby. Our region's with those, actually. And then it's a note pen, and from our school. That celebrates the 50-year anniversary.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to do that. And we have some gifts for you guys as well. This is our flag that you can take back and display.
Thank you.
And a city coin and a lapel pin for you.
Thank you so much.
And that one for you as well. And I have one for you. So you can display this at Highbryton for us. And then we have some gifts for you. We have a lapel pin for all the kids that we would like for them to have. This is our flag pin that we'd like for them, if they want to, they can put it on and wear it or whatever they... So why don't you guys, if you want to, come up, introduce yourself, and I'll give you a pin while you're up here, and everybody can convince you guys. So if you will, just tell her by your name.
Right there, right there.
Hello, my name is Lisa, and yeah, of course, I'm from Germany.
Well, thank you. There you go. Thank you very much.
My name is Malina. I'm 18 years old, and I'm also from Germany.
I'm Marion, and I'm from the Black Forest, the southern part of Germany.
That roll of good ham comes from them.
My name is Elric. I'm 70 years old, and I'm from the region around the Rhine.
My name is also Lisa. I'm 19. I'm from the near off the border of Luxembourg. It's really far away from Germany.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Grollan, and I'm 18 years old, and I'm from Stuttgart. That's also in the southern of Germany.
My name is Svenja. I'm also come from Stuttgart in Germany, and I'm 18 years old.
Hello, my name is Nueemi, and I'm coming from a small town in the Black Forest.
Hello, I'm Felix, and I come from Ludwigsburg.
My name is Noah. I'm 18. I come from Frankfurt in the northern region.
My name is Toby. I'm from Stegen. It's in Germany, close by to the school, and I'm really grateful for this opportunity and experiences I've got.
We're glad to have you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, if we can, would you like to shoot a picture?
Yes.
With all you guys and the council.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have to be up here now. We gotta be up here.
Oh, gosh.
One of them, one of them. I know. I know. I know he's here.
Oh, okay. I won't run off. Yeah, you're welcome. Apparently, they've been to California, too, because some of them, Malibu's led shirt in LA, some people who immigrated. Come up to the bar. I can do that.
Yeah, we come up to the bar.
Everybody jumped on that when it said bar. Kids to move over a little bit. Girls to slide right. All right. There you go. For everybody that can see you, you can see that. You can come up, too, because you're almost. All right, everybody's seeing me. Yep. Chrissy, I kind of, you're kind of, go to your right a little bit. Can't, you go to your right a little bit, or I'll have you go to, there we go. I think that's about as good as all right, everybody smile. One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. And then I'll do a flash. One, two, three, cheese. One, two, three, cheese. All right, we'll get you right here by state where you are. All right. All right. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Chrissy, I lost you, but come to the right. One, two, three. And without a flash. Ready?
I was drifting the wrong way, I guess. I thought I was drifting the wrong way. Let's get the beer and the bar.
I know that, I think some of the parents that are staying with are here. Yes. I know Stevens, David and Dharma have fun when students stay there.
Who do you have? Who's your student?
We have the All family.
Which one's Lisa?
Do y'all stand up? There's the All family.
The green one?
Shark family. He's colorblind, but don't give him colors. Steven's, the Van Ols dolls. She's right here. Car dolls.
Bange.
Yeah, the heights. The heights. You share that? Yeah. Share all those kids? I'll share them. They're right there. We'll share them. Again, thank y'all. We're glad to have you. I hope you enjoy your time here. You're here for over a week, is that what I understand? Yeah, great. Great. If we can help you with anything else, please let us know. We'd be glad to meet with you at any time. So just keep us posted on how's everything going. Thank you, families of Lenora that are hosting them. We certainly appreciate you doing that, and I know they'll enjoy their stays with us. Got to show them all kind of good love here in Lenora while they're here on that. And so thank y'all for being with us. All right, we will move on then on our council agenda here. We don't have any matters for public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items, which consist of minutes of the budget retreat of Friday, February 24th, as submitted. We have a renewal. This is a sidewalk cafe permit. This would be for approval of a sidewalk cafe permit for a side street courthouse with the following conditions carried forth from the original approval. That would be, one, the applicant must coordinate with the city's public works director prior to modifying or installing any support structures for lights or awnings or modifying any enclosure fencing. Item two is string lights installed over the sidewalk cafe are limited to white, non-blinking lights. Item three are all provisions of Section 13-3, subsection C, shall continue to apply to the use and operations of the sidewalk cafe area. And item four is current copy of the certificate of liability insurance, naming the city as a certificate holder must be provided to the planning department. Those go with that one. Then item C is the business purchase. This is a refuge truck. A recommendation is the council authorize the purchaser, the purchase of a 2024 Freightliner M2106, Howl Durapack 5000, 25 cubic yard, heavy-duty, compaction, rear-loading refuge truck by resolution at a cost of $228,818.73 and the utilization of the competitive bidding group purchasing exception. Item D is the Western Piedmont Council Government Stormwater Partnership. This is a contract renewal between the Western Piedmont Council Governments and the City of Lenora for assistance in supporting the Western Piedmont Stormwater Partnership for July 1 of 2023 through June 30 through 2025. This is at a cost of $110,724. And item E is a Western Piedmont Council Government Stormwater Mapping Agreement. This would be for the approval between the WPCOG and the City of Lenora for the provision of stormwater utility mapping services at a fee not to exceed $183,044. That's your items A through E. I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Oh, we do have one other one, I think, don't we? Surely?
Yes, that resolution we gave to them.
You already gave. Yeah, the resolution that we presented to the Sister Cities Association would be item F on that, if you will, please.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda adding item F.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Purdue to approve the consent agenda items A through F as presented. Now, with a question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. We'll now move to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council tonight, other than all of us that are already with us and already have, if there's anyone else that would like to address the council, now is the time to do so. And not seeing anyone, we do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of our city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor of Council, just a few items tonight for information. The Foothills Regional Airport Authority will meet on Wednesday, March 29th, at noon at the airport. The National Cities Congressional City Conference will be held starting Saturday, March 25th, in Washington, DC, and run through March 28th, which is a Tuesday. Attending will be Mayor Pro Tem Chrissy Thomas, City Attorney Rohr, and myself. Then the committee, the whole meeting for next Tuesday, March 28th, has been canceled, and our next meeting will be on Thursday, March 30th, for a budget meeting at 8:30 a.m., Third Floor City Hall. And with that, that's all I have unless there's questions.
Any questions of Mr. Hildebrand? So the next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 30th.
8:30 a.m.
Yeah, okay. All right, there's no items for council action. All right, we'll move on then to any reports and recommendations of our city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Behave yourself in Washington, if you will.
It's gonna be hard, so I'll try.
I think we'll be up there at the end of the cherry blossoms.
Enjoy the cherry blossom.
Yes.
All right. And I don't have any report from the mayor's office. I'm trying to think if I'm missing something I need to talk about. I know that one did want to say, and we talked about it earlier, the Main Street Conference in Statesville was a great, great conference. A lot of great things there. We enjoyed that. Statesville did a great job of hosting it, and we appreciate the representation of everyone there. Mr. Hildebrand and I drove back and forth to that to be involved, and we had some, Kaylin and Matthew both did some, were part of several of the things that they do, the sessions that they do over there, and we appreciate their involvement there. So it was a good event there. All right, and we'll, any reports and any recommendations of the city council members? Anybody have anything to bring up? Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir, I'm good to go.
You good to go?
Thank you for asking.
Always don't want to leave you out, ever. Always don't want to leave you out, ever. All right, if there's nothing else to come before us tonight, we got a short meeting. We stand adjourned.